It is seven o'clock. We will start our our October eighteenth city council meeting. Let's start with roll call.
Councilman Becker.
Here.
Councilman Harwick, here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
President Shear.
Here. Agenda item three will be public hearings. This evening we have none. Agenda item four is public comment. Just as a reminder, the city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the items also elsewhere on the agenda. If nobody signed up in person, this will be a first call for public comment either in person or via Zoom. It's a second call for public comment. This is a third and final call for public comment. None hearing none, we will move right along. Agenda item five is our consent agenda. Another reminder that the consent agenda that is outlined is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, just as an item of disclosure regarding the agenda item G, I am the chamber president, but voting on this does not affect my financial well-being or the of the Chamber of Commerce. So we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item six is petitions requesting communications. Six A is the presentation from TDS regarding installation of fiber in the city of Fort Atkinson. And I believe we have a TDS representative online with us.
Yes.
Alan, would you like to share your screen or do you want me to bring up the presentation from my end?
I will share my screen here.
Okay, let me know if you have any issue. Oh, perfect.
It worked. Are you guys able to see that? Okay.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Let me just get that full screen here. So just start off by saying first, you know, thank you, members of the council for giving me the opportunity to speak with you here today. My apologies, it's not in person. We usually like to do these in in person. However, I'm covering for a colleague, so it kind of took me a few other places today. But I'm here today to introduce TDS and provide visibility into our fiber project in the city of Fort Atkinson, which when complete will offer the community a new reliable choice for internet TV and voice services. And my apologies for getting ahead of myself. My name is Alan Roth. I'm a manager with business development with TDS Telecom here. So in the next couple of minutes here, I'll just kind of walk you through a high value overview of who we are, the community benefits, construction, and then I have some Q and A here at the end with any questions that the council does have. With that, I always you know, I'd like to provide a prefix for these meetings and I like to say that by putting myself in your shoes is TDS plans to invest significant capital, hire local contractors can to construct this network, all of which will be self-funded by TDS. So what we ask from the city to bring this tremendous project to fruition is collaboration from the city. So without further ado, let's jump right in here. So since our Hubble beginning in nineteen sixty-nine Telephone Data Systems, or TDS for short, was founded with the goal to connect rural and suburban communities to the world. Since then, TDS has become a publicly traded Fortune one thousand company that provides a range of products and services from wireless, wireline, IT to marketing services. Now, although our business and service portfolio has grown throughout the years, we still remain very much family owned with the Carlson family being a majority shareholder. So we like to say we're a big little company. For us, we're going to be focusing on TDS Telecom, which is our wireline portion of business that includes that internet, TV, and voice services. We're actually headquartered locally in Madison, Wisconsin, where the seventh largest wireline provider servicing more than eleven hundred communities in thirty-four states. This is a high value overview of what our service footprint looks like today. Those light blue states are going to be our active service states. Those dark blue are going to be the service areas within those states. Now, since our inception, we have very much remained committed to investing in underserved rural communities. And that's what brings us to Fort Atkinson. Based on our own internal research, local focus groups, analysis by our senior leadership, Fort Atkinson has made it to the top of our list of target cities based on its size, appealing demographics, and it being underserved by the existing providers. So our our goal here is not only to bring choice to the community, but what we like to say is future-proof the community. And what I mean by that is what two G internet speed today could be twenty gig tomorrow, and once that fiber is in the ground, it can scale with demand and no problem. There's really no demand limitations with fiber once it's there. And a big example that we saw this was during COVID when a living room became the classroom, a doctor's office or remote office to work, where it really put a strain on the family's internet connection. So rest assured, our starting internet speed is going to be three hundred meg symmetrical. Symmetrical is just a fancy way of saying that the download speed is going to be same as upload speed and and vice versa. We'll offer all the way up to two gig service, ten gigs for business. So there'll be no issues with families attending virtual meetings, streaming shows, or connecting with those loved ones on that reliable fiber network. An example of this is usually something every home has is Netflix. Netflix recommends a three meg connection for standard streaming and five makes for HD. So when you divide that up between the three hundred, basically, there's enough bandwidth there for the entire family, the entire household to stream their own shows on individual TV without any buffering. But again, don't let me get ahead of myself. Choice and reliability service is the end result. To get there, we're basically looking at constructing and installing ninety-two miles of fiber cable. Once complete, we're looking at a total number of six thousand six hundred sixty-seven service addresses in the Fort Atkinson area with TDS making a capital investment of seven million seven hundred forty-one thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars. We're looking to get started with the construction here later on this month. And we're currently at a build timeline of around twenty-four months. So we're hoping to get things wrapped up here in in twenty twenty-four. And just to kind of give you a little detail on this map that you see here, there's those different little shapes with those weird numbers that you see. This is how we divide up the city. It's what we call DFNs. It's how we permit, communicate, construction, build, and then turn up services. So that way, we're kind of in one area at a time, working away systematically through the city. And this allows us to really scale up and scale down construct construction. But not only not only that, communicate with each one of these neighborhoods or DFNs. So we can be as transparent and and open as possible with our communication and the construction to come because right, construction is disruptive. And and we know that from our years of of doing this. But one thing we found is communication visibility are key to that. And as a result, we create this really robust communication plan that I'll walk you through. Now, don't get me wrong, you will still get calls, you still get emails. What we want to do is is stop that and ask you to turn them those calls, those emails back on a TDS. And the reason why I say that is that we developed a system where we can create track and assign tickets for resolution. So on all communications that you receive during construction, you'll see a toll-free numberless that takes callers directly to our TDS triage team. Now, one thing I always like to clear up is when we hear one eight hundred number, we grow into love the whole music and the whole times. With us, we, there's two options when you call it one eight five five number, sales, construction. We pride ourselves on having a two-minute or less hold time. So basically what that means is when you get connected there, you're going to get somebody on the line to respond to your issue concern and help you resolve that in less than two minutes. So when callers have construction-related questions, they call that number. They can create assigned tickets for resolution to ensure those tickets are fielded and worked in appropriate timeframe. We do require our contractors to inside to assign one to two employees to receive and work those issue tickets. And we also have service level agreements built into our contracts with our contractors, which you can see kind of listed there in that response time SLA or or service level agreement. Basically, we want to ensure that we are tracking, resolving any questions or issues in a timely manner. But getting into those communications themselves, two weeks prior to construction, a letter is sent out focusing on three things. Awareness of construction starting, education on what an easement is, and safety. In particular, the importance of not removing flag markers to ensure the safety of the neighborhoods, the residents, and our construction crews. The week of construction, we send out this beautiful highlighter yellow postcard that you see in the bottom left screen. This is, it's really hard to miss. And Rebecca, I can also get you a copy of this. I provided that during our city kickoff meeting, but I can also drop some more off too as well. It's a really hard to miss postcard there. And again, we just want to make sure that we make residents aware that construction will begin. Who's going to be doing the constructing and also provide that one eight five five number? Where if they do have any questions or concerns, it's right there for them. We also do on the day of construction, we'll go door to door with these door hangers. Again, bright yellow, it's in the top right corner there. Again, just alerting of what construction is going to be happening. Who's doing that? And as you see, there's circle that one eight five five number. And then anytime we do have crews on the ground, we'll be putting up these sandwich boards. Again, just learning construction going on, who's doing that construction? And as you can see there, we have that phone number and and website to listed as as well. Now, the most common concern we always get is is restoration, right? Construction is this a bit disruptive. We're digging the front yard, we're digging in the backyard. Anytime we do disturb any ground, we're putting these yard signs in. It's basically saying, hey, we totally understand. We disturbed this this ground. We're going to, we're able and we will fix it as quickly as possible. But if you again do have any concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out. We have that website. We also do have that phone number on there. That website on there is a really great tool. Again, it provides all the communication that we went through. But one really cool feature about that website is you can actually go there, put in your address, and it will bring up your DFN map for the city. So it will allow a resident to go on there, put in their address. They can actually see when construction is coming to their neighborhood, when they'll be able to order services. Again, just keep that transparency and visibility open as much as possible. Now, in in closing, fiber services is really not all that we do here. From coast to coast, TDS supports and contributes to a wide variety of hometown nonprofits, charities, national recognized nonprofits, from hands-on volunteering to in-kind financial support. We really take a vested interest in the growth, the success of the communities we serve. So i- if there is one thing you can take away from this meeting, it's that we we truly invest in the communities we serve and look forward to investing in the growth and success of of Fort Atkinson. So in closing, it was a pleasure to meet you and partner with you on such a tremendous project. We're very excited about this and together with your leadership, we look forward to bringing this to fruition. I will stop sharing my screen and open up to any questions.
Alan, I'm curious. You just mentioned at the beginning how, you know, the investment is self-funded by TDS and that what you guys ask for is collaboration from the city. Can you just clarify exactly, you know, what does collaboration mean from your teams and?
Yeah, definitely. So of course with it, you know, there's going to be, you know, some cost in support from the city that that we need. And that's basically the city facilities are responsible for working low K tickets for utilities which come in associated. Also working the permits and doing any locating and inspection. And that's really to the extent of the collaboration that we look for.
And we've coordinated with with them as far as the location and we're open lines of communication between their folks and our folks. So we can make sure we're directing people who call City Hall to the right place. We know we're not taking on any of that. We're just going to be directing that traffic right back to to TDS. And we have copies of all of the the flyers and postcards and letters and things that they're providing so that we can understand what they look like if people call and and ask us questions as well.
Will all of your connections be like hardwired or will they be both wireless and hardwired?
Yeah, great question there. So all of our services are wireline or or hardwired. So we'll actually run a fiber cable directly into the home, into the business. From there, we'll set up a wireless router, which then will provide wireless services inside the resident or business. But all of our services are are wireline based.
Do you have a projected idea of what this might cost for someone to do their house?
Yeah, definitely. So with our tedious internet, for example, that three hundred meg, that's going to be forty-seven dollars per month with our router included. And then, of course, it'll tier up from there.
And if we care to do something say in a city park where we wanted to make something wireless, are you going to, you can be involved in that and get it wireless in a park?
Yeah, if we're looking to bring services to a park or municipal building, we just ask that you provide the locations. We can work that into our construction and engineering. And I can get that submitted over to them for review.
Thank you.
Alan, I just have one more question. And sorry if I missed this in your in the information you provided, but for those homeowners who would have you know, slight disruption in their front yard or whatever it may be for the insulation, what what is the average timeline of that look like? Is it a day? Is it three weeks? Is there kind of a an average that you see that is shared with homeowners?
Yeah, so on that yard sign, and what we like to do is is a two-week turnaround on soft surface restoration. So if there is a disturbance in the front yard, we want to get that repaired within two weeks.
Thank you.
And Alan, do you want to talk about any sort of pedestals that that people might see and the underground infrastructure as well?
Yeah, definitely. Appreciate the question. So with with the new network, we will be putting up new pedestals and handholds depending on where the facilities are located. So we like to basically replicate or follow what's already there. So if we're in the backyard and there's currently pedestals by the eighteen tier spectrum, we'll basically match those pedestals. If we're in the front yard, we'll put a handhold. We don't want to create a an eyesore in the front yard. So we want to put a pedestal if we are in that area. In in all of our builds, we do focus on the second part of that question. We focus on on basically an eighty-twenty split. And in some areas, it's more of a ninety-ten. And what I mean by that is is the majority of our construction is underground. So it it just, once it's in the ground, as I mentioned, there's really nothing that we need to do as far as scaling up or scaling down. So eighty to ninety percent of the network will be underground via half inch or one and a half inch conduit. And the other ten to twenty percent will be aerial.
Alan, I have a question because because I know people I know will ask me about this. And I apologize if this was on the map you displayed. I know we're focused on the city of Fort Atkinson here, but will your service be going into any of the outlying townships or is this strictly within the city limits right now?
Did you have one in particular that you had in mind?
Well, like we have some, some, I guess you could call them town islands within the city. And we also have parts of like caution on township that kind of jot into the city. So I was just curious if if this service will be available to those residents or or not.
For now, our construction and services will focus on Fort Atkinson within the municipal city limits. Potentially, we do have opportunity to grow once the network is set up. So one thing we do also ask is is we partner with utilities on joint trench opportunities as the city continues to grow. So if there's an opportunity that does arise, there's no saying that we wouldn't be able to service that in the future.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Yes.
Alan, what's the, what's the proposed groundbreaking date? You're going to start this, I I you may have said when, but you propose to start this in the spring or you propose to start it before then?
We currently have one approved permit to start construction here. We're hoping to get started here in late October. So hopefully before the end of this month. If if not, we'll be looking at an early November start.
And when you say twenty-four months approximate to up and run, does that mean up and running on the entire city?
A good question. So going back to that map, what we do is we permit by DFN. So we break the entire municipality out down into little polygons and what we call DFNs. And we'll actually permit by that DFN can construct the network there. We'll turn up services. So once that first DFN is done, people can actually start ordering services. And then we'll move on to the DFN until the next DFN until we have the whole city connected.
So you'll be able to preorder your service and be on the list?
Correct. Yeah, we'll we'll actually have teams, a marketing team going in the neighborhoods. We'll start being at local events where customers can preorder services.
Well, my name will be on that list. Thank you.
Good to hear.
There does not appear to be any other questions? Any other questions?
I do. I know some comments have been made in conversations with like local businesses or even in our business park where there isn't a building yet, where high-speed internet was was a concern for them and that infrastructure like didn't exist. But one of the one of the costs or that are hurdles for some of the businesses were what they consider like the last mile, where like the infrastructure was set up to the road, but not to the business. Is that something that like once a consumer chooses to to go with TDS that that fight that last mile is then completed to connect from, you know, the roadway to the the building itself?
Yeah, great question there. So we will engineer the the entire city. And what we will do is we won't go on private property and actually what they call install a drop, which goes from our our basically cabinet to the customer's home or to the business until that services is ordered. So once the customer requests services or pre registers for service, that's when we'll actually install the services from that point to the customer's home or or to the business itself.
Is that cost burdened by or to TDS or to the homeowner, property owner?
With that preregistration, for instance, it's twenty-five dollars to pre-register. That covers installation and everything to get you set up, including in stock inside wiring. And then that twenty-five dollars will be applied to the first bill. So there's no additional cost to the customer there for install.
Is your company aware of that? We've got a seventy-five acre housing project going on? And will you guys be coordinating with that? So that people going into that and saying, hey, I maybe want to buy a lot? We'll have know that they've got instant fiber optic available to them?
Yeah, we will definitely try to coordinate. If you if you know the point of contact who's overseeing that project, we will definitely again get that in front of our engineering and construction teams very much. It's we rely on the building owners to reach out to us. We will try to reach out to them. But until for like a development project like that, a lot of times what we need is something called an ROE, a right of entry, to allow us on the property to offer those services to those new developments. So it's something that we very much like to work on early on, especially while the ground is is soft or or there's a trench going on where energy services, gas lines are being ran. So yeah, we definitely be interested if you could get us in contact with the a person overseeing that.
Alan, you probably don't remember in your numerous meetings, I'm sure, in in cities, but we we talked about this when we met with your team and ours a few months ago. So we're just in the early stages of planning for that development and and all the utilities, obviously, will go in alongside ours when we start building roads and things out there. So it'll be pre-plumbed for fiber optic and whatever else our hearts desire out there.
Perfect.
Well, I thank you for the presentation and I'm sure our constituents, thank you for the expanded options of internet services within our community.
Definitely my pleasure. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to present and speak here. If there are any questions that do come up, please don't hesitate to reach out. I believe Rebecca has all of my contact information. I'm happy to help to enact as a point of contact for you.
Thank you, Alan. We will carry right along on to agenda item seven, which is resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is the review and possible action relating to a resolution requesting exemption from the county library tax for the city of Fort Atkinson.
Thank you. The Jefferson County Board has established a county library service and levies a county library tax. Statutes provide that a municipality is exempt from the county library tax if municipality levels levies a minimum amount for the library. So annually in September, the county calculates the minimum levy for municipalities to qualify for the exemption. They sent us that letter in September and that calculation, it indicates that the city is required to appropriate at least three hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars to the Dwight Foster Public Library to be exempt from the tax for twenty twenty-three. As presented to the city council during the budget workshop on October eleventh, the city is proposing to levy six hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and eleven dollars in property taxes to fund library operations in twenty twenty-three. So this amount exceeds the minimum appropriation and allows the city to be exempt from that county library tax. So staff does recommend that the city council adopt the resolution requesting exemption from the county library tax and direct the city clerk to provide copies of the resolution to the county clerk and the Jefferson County Library Council Administrator, who is our very own Eric Robinson.
I move to adopt the resolution requesting exemption from the county library tax for the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Seven B is the review and possible action relating to a resolution establishing the boundaries and approving the project plan for tax incremental district number nine in the city of Fort Atkinson.
So I will just go ahead and present some information about tax increment districts nine and ten, and then they will require separate action by the council. Brian from Baird, the city's financial advisors and consultants in the creation of these tax increment districts is here on Zoom. So he will be here to answer any questions as well. We did have a workshop on September sixth with the city council for on these tax increment districts. The project plans are both included in your packet. TID nine is being created as a mixed-use district. It's located on the northwest side of the city and will overlay certain sections of our existing TID eight. TID ten is being created as a blight elimination district and is located on the northeast side of the city. With the creation of the new TID, staff anticipates using the project plans as guides to prioritize public infrastructure improvements necessary to support future development and redevelopment in these areas. So as I mentioned, we held a workshop where Justin Fisher, also from Baird, presented tax increment financing one-on-one workshop. And then we went on to discuss the specific boundaries and project plans for these two tax increment districts. All of those required notices were mailed to property owners on September sixth. Public notices were published and posted in accordance with state statutes. All those are attached in the packet, in today's packet as the legal documents and notices. The Joint Review Board met on September twenty-sixth for their annual review of the city's existing TIDS. Six, seven, and eight are active right now. Staff also presented these project plans and boundaries for TIDS nine and ten at that meeting. The Plan Commission met on September twenty-seventh and held a public hearing for each of these tax increment districts and the project plans. I will note that one property owner did request that his the property he owns be removed from the TID number ten. However, we did indicate that the parcel was needed for contiguity to other parcels to the north. So the Plan Commission did take formal action through So the Plan Commission did take formal action through resolutions that are also included in your packet to recommend that the city council approve the project plans and boundaries for TIDS nine and ten as proposed. So if the city council does adopt the recommended resolutions tonight, the Joint Review Board will meet on November first for final action. And then staff will file paperwork with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. I will also note that any future public projects, development agreements, and any other items associated with the tax incremental financing will come back through the city council for action. Additionally, staff will continue to report on the status of the TIDS annually to the Joint Review Board, which, if you recall, is a, it has representatives from each of our taxing jurisdictions at that annual meeting and to the city council during the budget cycle. And any other time an update is is requested or desired by the council. I I didn't bring the presentation, but all of the maps and showing boundaries and showing project plans, showing potential projects, public infrastructure projects are all included in the packet in those proposed project plans. So if there are questions, please let me know. I can answer questions. Brian can answer questions. And I will say that staff and the Plan Commission recommend that the city council adopt the attached resolutions approving the project plans and boundaries for TIDS nine and ten in the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. And just to note that separate action is needed on on both of these agenda items.
Rebecca, can you just clarify what the concern of the the homeowner was with asking to be removed? And kind of what are the potential benefits or or detriments to individual homeowners that would be located in a TID?
There are not any, there's not a downside to being included in a tax increment district. This particular property owner owns a large piece of land that has some conservancy district over it. So if there are floodplains or wetlands or things like that, then it wouldn't be able to be developed anyway in the future. However, it's, this is one of those things where we play the long game, right? It it doesn't hurt anything to include the parcel. We included the parcel because there is potential in the future for some sort of development or some sort of public infrastructure that might improve the value of the land or might improve the value of the area in so much that would encourage additional development and redevelopment in into the future. So this particular parcel is, was needed for contiguity to several parcels to the north that actually have, already have private, new private investment that we have approved moving forward, which will add increment to this TID quickly. So it it is beneficial to to the the TID and and to the to the city and to future development and redevelopment to have those parcels included because they'll generate some revenue before, before other development that hasn't been approved yet or isn't moving forward yet.
Thank you.
I'll move to adopt the resolution establishing the boundaries of and approving the project plan for tax increment incremental district number nine in the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Now we'd be entertaining the motion on seven C.
I move to adopt the resolution establishing the brown boundaries of and approving the project plan for Tax Incremental District Number Ten in the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries.
Chris, I just want to add quick. I know Rebecca brought it up, but I just think it's it's worth highlighting that I appreciate the time that was put in from the city side to really invest in kind of the education on this. You know, personally for myself, and and I know others who've maybe been on the council that haven't been a part of officially approving something like this for our city. You know, TID and TIF information is complicated. And I I just appreciate that the the thought and the time was allowed to to give us, especially again, those of us newer to this, the space to to fully understand this and and understand the impact that it can have on our city. So I just think that is is worth giving a little more attention to.
All right, we'll move along. Thank you for joining us this evening. Sorry, we didn't have more questions for you.
Fine, thank you.
Agenda item eight is reports of officers, boards, and committees. Eight A is the city manager's report.
Thank you. The city council and staff held a, what I'll call a marathon budget workshop on October eleventh. We made great progress in anticipation of the two thousand twenty-three budget public hearing, which will take place at the regular city council meeting on November first. On October twelfth, Thrive ED and Jefferson, the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium, or JCEDC, held their annual meeting in Watertown. Council President Shear and I attended. It was very well attended. We presented. And I'm sorry, Council Member Becker attended too. I apologize. It was well-attended. We presented a new strategic, strategic direction for the organization, and we are, that organization is doing a lot of work that will benefit the county and the city of Fort Atkinson in the short term and the long term. So our continued investment is 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 will benefit us. And through JCEDC, Council Member Becker and I were able to meet with a group of developers from the Madison region on October thirteenth in Johnson Creek. Was an opportunity for us to advertise Fort Atkinson to that development and community that typically stays around Dane County, but we all know the cost of doing business in Dane County continues to increase. Whereas we we are in a great position to to be to enjoy additional development in the in the in the near future here. At the end of this week, Council President Shear, Council Member Becker, Engineer Selly, Clerk Everett, and I will be representing the city of Fort Atkinson at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Annual Conference in McCross. We'll be presenting information to our colleagues about the city's efforts at encouraging housing with our banker road development and also presenting information about our our efforts at the Public Safety Referendum in April of two thousand twenty-two. We'll also be learning about how other communities navigate the the same problems and and situations and issues that we face here. So it's a really great opportunity for us to connect with elected officials and appointed officials who have the same goal of advocating on our own behalf at the state level to ensure that we can sustainably fund our operations and services that we provide for our residents long into the future. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item nine is unfinished business. This evening we have none. Agenda item ten is new business. Ten A is the review and possible action relating to the Jones Park Concession Stand lease agreement.
Yes, thank you. I'm sure everyone is familiar with the concession stand at Jones Park, known for the dollar beers, affordable food, good company. The stand is run by the Generals baseball team, who play many baseball games at Jones Park. In addition to playing at the park, the Generals have donated a significant amount towards park improvements. So as stated in the memo, the Generals have purchased or built the majority of the items that can be removed from the concession stand. So the Generals baseball team approached the city with with hopes in creating this lease to protect their significant investment in the park over the the many years. So with that and the memo, I'm happy to answer any questions council might have. I also wanted to note, I think Josh is Jay Smith on Zoom here from the Generals, if there are any questions for for him as well.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say I I don't have any major questions at all. I'm I'm glad that we're continuing this partnership with the Generals, who have given so much back to Jones Park and the community over the years. And I'm looking forward to another summer of baseball and dollar beers and fun.
I was jokingly going to say, hopefully this doesn't mean beers go from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five, so.
Brooke, can you just clarify one thing in here in the memo for me? That it says the city will be responsible for coordinating the use of the facility by a third party. But that it would still be at the Generals' discretion whether or not to open it? Can you just?
Yeah, so that third party would come to the Parks and Rec Department, and we would be that middle person between that third party and the Generals and kind of communicate, would communicate with the Generals to approve it or not. But ultimately, since they, the Generals would provide at least one person during that event, they would have the ultimate say if they can provide somebody for that event or not.
So that's more like a group that probably doesn't already have an existing relationship with the Generals that would come through you first?
Correct, yep.
So I just, I just will add to that. The, they still have to come to the city because it's our park. Right? So this is, it's our park, and they're going to rent our park, or they're going to play on the field that is our field. When the, where the Generals get involved is if they, if the Generals choose to open the concession stand and allow them, the third party to sell concessions.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That makes much more sense to me. I move to approve the Jones Park Concession Stand lease agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson Generals baseball team.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item eleven is miscellaneous. This evening we have none. Agenda item twelve is claims appropriations and contract payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
I move to approve lists of verified claims designed by the Director of Finance and authorized payment.
We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. Motion carries. Finally, we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This meeting is adjourned.